Definitely, I don't want to turn Memorial Day into politics, you know, I hate to do that personally.
Right, Mike, it's seven o'clock.
I got you there, I got you all there. Alright, so let's get ready to rock and roll. Alright, I'd like to say good evening and welcome to Garfield Heights City Council Meeting for May the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. And I figure we're going to skip the invocation. We still should do invocation sometime. I'm just saying, I really would like to go back to that. Okay. Barb, can we have roll call?
Dudley?
Here?
Dunhill?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Taglerini?
Here.
Vaughn?
Vaughn is here.
Alright, we have all seven council members here tonight, so that's good. Next, we have written communications, excuse me, reading correction, reading and disposal of the minutes.
Your Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Vaughn.
I'd like to make a motion for us to approve minutes of the regular meeting of council for the city of Garfield Heights for Monday, May tenth, twenty twenty-one.
Alright, Barb, can we have a roll call?
Need a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Chuck Dunhill.
Thank you. Alright, Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Mike Dudley vote yes?
Dunhill?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Alright, we have seven votes to approve the minutes. And now, do we have any written communications?
Going to order, Mr. Dudley.
Oh.
There's only six council members present.
Oh, man, I keep forgetting correction, I forgot Councilman Mike Manadovich. Okay, that asked me, did we already make the motion, no we didn't, to excuse Councilman Mike Manadovich from tonight's meeting?
Your Chairman?
Yes.
Let me make the motion to excuse Councilman Nanadovich from tonight's council meeting.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Councilman Tom Vaughn to excuse Councilman Mike Manadovich from tonight's meeting and second by Councilman Frank Taglerini. And Barb? Let me know if you got that.
Okay.
Vaughn votes yes.
Thank you. Dudley?
Mike Dudley vote yes.
Dunhill?
Yes.
Johnson?
Avery Johnson votes yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Alright, we have six yes votes to approve the read and the disposal of the minutes. Barb, do we have any written communications to council tonight?
No, sir, I could not receive any.
I believe we have Ms. Milette King from the liaison from Garfield Heights City School to like to read her comments tonight, her letter.
Thank you, Councilman Dudley. We are nearing the end of a very unique school year. The last day of classes will be June fourth. Over the last month, the district was able to bring back some of our traditional in-person celebrations, such as National Honor Society induction, musical performances, senior awards, prom, and graduation will be held on June third at Rocket Mortgage Field House. The district will offer summer, a summer program in a full-day format that will allow students to strengthen their academic skills as well as participate in fun and engaging activities each afternoon. The first session is June fourteenth through June twenty-fifth, and the second session is July twelfth through July twenty-third. The next regular school board meeting will be held on June twenty-first at six o'clock, and you can view it via our YouTube channel. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Okay, next we have, are there any committee reports?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Councilman Blake.
Like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the recreation committee meeting for Wednesday, May twelfth, twenty twenty-one, as written.
Okay, well, can we get a roll call?
Need a second.
Second.
Oh, it's giving, get a second.
I will second that.
That was.
Lee?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Dudley votes yes.
Dunhill?
Not on the committee, but okay, yes.
Oh, sir. I'm just calling everybody. Shall I continue? I'll correct it later.
Okay. Is it okay, Tim, for her to correct that later, or should we redo it?
I would suggest you redo it.
Okay, hold on.
Once again, do we have any committee reports tonight?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Blake?
Like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the recreation committee meeting for Wednesday, May twelfth, twenty twenty-one, as written.
Can this committee get a roll call, Barb?
Need a second.
I will second it, Frank Taglerini.
Can we get a roll call, Barb?
Dudley? I'm sorry, I'm starting now, I'm sorry, I should start with, oh my, Mr. Blake, I'll start with Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Chairman. Taglerini?
Yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
And Dunhill?
I'm on it.
I missed your on it.
I don't know when I got added, but, okay, yes.
As of today, I was informed that you're on it.
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson's on it, too.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson, Tim partake in that.
Thank you.
Oh, he cannot, alright. Yeah, because he wasn't there, alright. That's all. We have four yeses.
Alright. And next we have, we have reports, excuse me, we have reports of the mayor and directors. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a report tonight, and it's relatively, I'll try to make it as quick as possible. The Riverside event was held, I believe, last Saturday. We had eight participants. I believe, you know, because of COVID, it was low attended, but, you know, it's always the Saturday before Mother's Day. So, I know we can do a better job as a city in helping, and I'm going to put it on my calendar for next year, for that Saturday before Mother's Day, so I could be a participant, and I would ask that other residents do the same. If we can all get together and help, it makes our city a lot cleaner. I wanted to also talk about an event that we're planning here at the city, at the Civic Center. We're targeting July twenty-fourth and July thirty-first to have a city flea market open to residents to come in, set up a table, and there'll be some information on that. So, just be looking for that July twenty-fourth and July thirty-first, which is kind of putting the ball in motion now. I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the things that we have been doing here with the Rec Center, with Paul Burke. First of all, I have to, I have to say that I was contacted probably about a month ago by a good friend of mine, fellow classmate, good friend of Councilman Blake as well. Her name is Beth Stolarcek, and Beth called me, for those that don't know anything about Beth, Beth is a nineteen eighty-eight graduate, although she probably wouldn't like me saying that, because it would age her. But she is also a reality TV star. She currently lives in California. She's been on the MTV Real World, she's currently on the Challenger All-Stars. She started on the Gauntlet and the Duel. And the reason why I bring her up, is she contacted me just to ask me what she can do to help older in our, in our community. And it was, it kind of caught me out of the blue. I have not even spoken to her since nineteen eighty-eight, but it was coming out of the blue, and it's something that I believe when Paul gets in his report, he will detail some of the things that they spoke about. I put her in contact right with Paul Burke. But I think that's pretty exciting, that here we have a Garfield Heights alumni who wants to reach out and help with recreation in the city. I wanted to talk a little bit about Cranwood Fields, the baseball fields down there at Cranwood. Mr. Paul Burke and I have had numerous conversations in regard to this particular park that is basically just sitting currently vacant. What we are looking at doing is actually going in, cleaning it up, making it available to residents where they can host their own, like, birthday parties, or maybe family events or so. Resident would have to reserve the picnic area or reserve the park. We would ask them to put a security deposit down, and then, once they are done using the park, we would go in, assess it, make sure that it's not, you know, it was cleaned up and everything, and then they would get their security deposit back. I attended the Lupus Walk the other day, and I was talking to Mr. James Johnson, who had said to me that he had paid three hundred and fifty dollars for the pavilion over at the Garfield Heights Metro Park, the Garfield Reservation. And, you know, when you do a event that's going to help people in the community, and it ends up costing you money, it's really not a good event. And this is just something that, you know, will help him that, because he could have possibly done this event at Cranwood Fields, and it would have been more beneficial to the residents and to the organization he was raising money for. Having said that, I also think it helps with addressing a need in the community, but also a field that really has not been used for years, and I believe should be utilized. I want to talk about, we have Dr. Adrian Fletcher Crawford. We just set some dates with her today for our in-person diversity, equity, and inclusion training. We're taking, we're dividing the staff up, and we're going to actually take about thirty people at a time. June, July, and August, we're having three different training modules. They will be in-person. We're very excited about it, because she is also a Garfield Heights graduate, and she is currently the dean for diversity, equity, and inclusion at Case Western Reserve University. So, I'm very excited about having her. We've been trying to get this done for months. I also want to welcome Councilman Avery Johnson, Ward Four, and congratulate him on his appointment. And if you guys would also join me in welcoming some, some pretty important people in the city as well. First of all, we swore in Officer Noel Ivaskevich. She comes to us from, I believe, University Heights. We also have Echo, one of our newest K-nine officers, who is handled by Patrolman Bayon. I want to congratulate Auxiliary Captain McGecky for his promotion, Lieutenant Estelik, and Sergeant Ennett Price also for their promotion. I want to talk to you a little bit about how we're going to open the buildings here on June seventh. June seventh, we're targeting for the Civic Center to open up. We will be following whatever the current CDC guidelines are. We will have those posted on the door. We are going to ask that residents, if they do not want to wear a mask, and it's part of the CDC guideline, then they should not wear a mask or will not wear a mask. That's really up to them, but I would ask that you be cordial to those that want to wear a mask. You know, we have it here in the administration. I believe everybody still wears a mask. I'm very respectful of anybody who comes into my office who wants to have the mask on. If they decide they don't want to have a mask on, we will address that, you know, individually, but you will abide by whatever the CDC guidelines are. The Civic Center rear entrance will continue to be the only entry to the building. We want to make that clear, because we are still under restrictions for our senior center. We're not going to be opening up the senior center. That'll be more of a phase-two rollout when we get the go-ahead to do so. We will be cleaning and disinfecting the building every night, just like we do now. The, there will be a sign-in sheet for everybody that comes in the building. I'm asking that they sign in just so that we know, we came in to see and what your nature of business was. This is something that we did prior to opening or prior to the pandemic, so I want to make sure that that continues to be followed. And then also, again, social distancing, working remotely, this is all stuff that we're looking at. As long as the CDC guidelines are followed, I believe that's the fairest way to go. When we got into the pandemic, we were told that we had to follow the CDC guidelines, and that's how we're going to proceed. I would like, at this time, to read a proclamation that I'm dedicating here. I don't know if Mr. Suster is on the call, but I will read this proclamation. This is to former council president and also former councilman Joe Suster, and I will read it as follows. Office of the Mayor proclamation. Whereas Joseph Suster was born on May twenty-sixth, nineteen forty-one, in Cleveland, Ohio. He graduated from Our Lady of Lord's High School and joined the Coast Guard, where he was stationed in Cape May, New Jersey. And whereas Joseph Suster married the love of his life, Donna, on May twenty-seventh, nineteen sixty-one, at St. Catherine's Church in Cleveland, Ohio. Two thousand twenty-one is their sixtieth wedding anniversary. They moved to Garfield Heights, Ohio in nineteen sixty-four. And whereas Joseph and Donna were blessed, four children, Joseph, David, Tina, and Lynn, who all attended and graduated from Garfield Heights High School. Their family continues to grow to include twelve grandchildren and nine great-grandchildren. And whereas he was first elected to Garfield Heights City Council as the Ward Five representative in nineteen eighty-six. Served on council for nearly thirty years, including several terms as council president. And whereas Joseph is an active member of St. Teresa Parish in Garfield Heights. He served as a Eucharistic minister, altar server, president of the Boosters, member of the Holy Name Society, and coached CYO football. And whereas Joseph was an active member of the Knights of Columbus Council Forty-One Thirty, where he received a past Grand Night Medal, as well as becoming a fourth-degree knight, which is the highest and most prestigious level a knight can become. Whereas Joseph enjoys spending time with his family, camping and fishing. And whereas it is only fitting that the citizens of the city of Garfield Heights join me along with his loving family and many friends, and extending heartfelt best wishes to Joseph Suster on the occasion of his eightieth birthday. Now therefore, I, Matthew Burke, Mayor of the city of Garfield Heights, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one, to be known as Joseph's Suster Day throughout the city of Garfield Heights. Congratulations, Mr. Suster, if you're on the phone, and I, happy birthday.
I'm here.
Happy birthday, Joe.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Joe.
Again.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Joe.
Thank you.
Mr. Michael Clyde, are you on the call?
He was, yes.
Yes, I am, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Clyde, it's your time, and I'm going to just say this to council and to the city of Garfield Heights, the residents of Garfield Heights. I got a text message on Sunday morning, or, excuse me, Sunday afternoon, about a fire that happened at forty-nine twenty-three East Eighty-Six Street on Sunday morning. Mr. Clyde saw the fire, saw the smoke, he kicked in the door and alerted the occupant and assisted her out. That is some heroic events there that I just think need to be pointed out. Mr. Clyde, how long have you lived in Garfield Heights?
Roughly about three years.
Three years. I want to personally say thank you for being the person you are and the neighbor that you are. It is, it is just unbelievable that you took your time and your courage to do what you did. I want to just say thank you for that. I urge council to have a resolution drawn up for the June fourteenth meeting to honor you and for doing what you did. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I ask my fellow councilmen to please vote with me now for a resolution to honor Mr. Clyde at our next council meeting. If I could get a roll call on that, please.
Alright, Barb, give a roll call to be able to vote on a resolution at the next meeting. That Councilman Tom Vaughn is asking for the support. Roll call, Barb?
Yep. Vaughn?
Vaughn, most definitely. Thank you, Mr. Clyde.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
Dudley?
We appreciate what you've done. It's an act of bravery, and with that, I vote yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Johnson?
Absolutely marvelous, Mr. Clyde. Thank you. My vote is yes.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Clyde, for your actions.
Thank you.
Taglerini?
No, he's muted.
I'm sorry. My vote is yes, and thank you, Mr. Clyde. You are a hero.
Thank you.
And everybody? Thank you, Mr. Clyde, once again, and we'll get that resolution drawn up, and I'll give you a call, and we'll go over that. And I look forward to seeing you tomorrow and going over that video that you have. I'm really anxious to see it, and like I said, I want to say thank you. I think the residents need to know that there are neighbors like you out there in our community who will help serve their fellow neighbor, and I, like I said, I can't thank you enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council.
With that, let me get into tonight's legislation. Ordinance number forty-five, two thousand twenty-one, is to address phase six of the multi-street repair. This is something that we originally tried to apply for a grant, and I believe now we have to look at it as a loan, because grant funds we did not receive. So I asked council for support on forty-five, two thousand twenty-one. Forty-six, two thousand twenty-one is to get bulletproof vests for our service, our safety department. This is a grant that I believe we always apply for and usually get. Ordinance number forty-seven, twenty twenty-one, is the K-Mart building. ICP is entertaining a potential renter for that particular, potential business for that particular space. So they want to zone it U-four, from U-four to U-eleven B. It's the entire parcel, except for a small spot in the very front. I believe that this should go to the Ways and Means Committee, and I would ask for council to act on it as soon as you can, because I don't really want to hold up any businesses that are coming into the city. It's very important, especially the type of businesses that industrial, commercial properties can bring to our city. Ordinance number forty-eight, two thousand twenty-one, is for the purchase of a K-nine unit, a Tahoe for another K-nine unit. Ordinance forty-nine, two thousand twenty-one, is for the equipment for the K-nine unit. Ordinance number fifty, two thousand twenty-one, is addressing the average pay fund and the police department. And then also ordinance number fifty-one dash two thousand twenty-one is to address the average pay fund for the fire department. I would like to have consideration on all those and support on all those. Also, Mr. Chairman, I think you're doing a great job tonight. I know this was kind of sprung on you, and my prayers go out to Mr. Nanadovich. I don't know what he's doing tonight, but I hope everything's fine. And like I said, Mr. Chairman, I think you're doing a great job, and I know it's not easy. And with that, you have my report.
Thank you, Mayor. We really appreciate that. Do any of the members of council have any questions for the mayor?
I do.
Oh, okay, Councilman Donahue.
Yeah, Mayor, I may have missed it, but did you have a potential date for the park availability? Or is that just something you were working on?
I'm going to, I believe Paul Burke is looking at cutting back some of the scrubs and stuff that has grown in. He was looking at that, I think yesterday or the day before, actually, no, it was last week, like Friday or so. So, I don't know where he's at with it, but I'm sure he can, he can address it, but it will be soon, because I think it's very a necessity.
Alright, thank you, Councilman Donahue. Does anybody else have a question for the mayor?
Okay.
Anyone else have a question for the mayor? Well, I have a quick question, Mayor. First, I want to say, I'm glad that somebody, and we are talking about the Cranwood Soft Bar Park, correct? On one hundred and thirty-first?
Yes, we are.
Okay, because we know that's been a long time coming. I can remember when, well, you probably remember there, Paul, when you couldn't even get a day to even get over there. That's how far backed up the waiting list was to get into that park over there. It was something. It's a beautiful area, and I'm glad that we are, once again, going to take care of and move it forward, because I know some residents want to get in there, but we're not going to think backwards, we're going to think forward. So I do appreciate y'all moving forward, and I'm quite sure more than enough people are going to be lined up waiting to opportunity to get in. So I thank you, Paul, and I thank you, Mayor, because it's been a long time coming, and we've been trying to get it done, and finally it's getting done. So it is appreciated. And with that, I thank you, Mayor, on our part, and I thank you, Paul, as well.
Paul, do you want to elaborate on that? I know, I don't know if I answered Mr. Donahue's question, and I, you know, feel bad if I didn't, but you can elaborate on that. I know you wanted to say some things also.
Oh, go ahead, let Mr. Donahue speak. I didn't know I cut him off.
Oh, no, no, I'm Mr. Donahue, Mr. Burke, Paul Burke.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Burke.
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't know if I was waiting for minutes from the directors or not, but if I got the floor, then, yeah. There really isn't a whole lot that needs to be done there. I mean, the grass has been cut once already. I know Mr. Jackson had his crew there once before, so cutting grass and some brushwork, and it's as ready as it's going to be as far as, you know, the normal maintenance on it and cutting grass and whatnot, so if anybody, we don't, I don't think we had a set date in mind, but I can almost basically just tell you ASAP if anybody's looking for it, and as far as the use of those fields go. I did want to say that to the pool, as far as the pool goes, the pool will be open starting June twelfth, two to seven. Still having some slight issues as far as personnel, there's a lifeguard shortage all around right now, and we have picked up a couple in recent days. I'm hoping it doesn't affect operations at all. Hopefully, you know, things stay status quo with it. T-ball, softball, both will start the week after, I want to say it's the first Monday, which is June seventh, I believe it is. Both will be played at Donovan Park. Actually, some T-ball will possibly be used at the girls' home, boys' home field as well. They want to entertain the possibility of us using their field, too, as well, which I think the kids would really love playing on that turf field. But moving forward with that. Um, the mayor's friend, Beth, um, she reached out to me, I'd say a couple of weeks ago, asking what, could she do the help? Um, she offered to buy uniforms for shirt, you know, for shirts for T-ball, softball. It, it helps with the cost a little bit, but she asked about any other options. Um, she says she has some strong connections with Nike and with Thunder Armor. Um, and I entertain the thought of possibly purchasing some cleats for, for the kids. That way, if their kid, besides just baseball or T-ball, if they're gonna continue to play soccer and possibly football, if we get that up and running, you know, they could, they could utilize it and, um, be able to give some cleats to some, some needy kids that would, uh, they would really make their day with. Um, she was very stern about trying to make it happen. She sounds like she's got some connections. Um, without promising anything, you know, and it's coming from her, I, 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 I think there will be something in place, but she just couldn't give me a timeframe in that regard as far as making it happen. Um, other than that, um, I believe that's it. And you have my report. Oh, I, I apologize. I want to congratulate Mister Avery Johnson. Um, he came down in Iraq a couple of months back and we talked for quite, quite some time and he had some, you know, some thoughts and ideas as well. And I know I emailed to congratulate him, but I wanted to formally congratulate him as well.
Thank you, Mister Burke. Appreciate that very much.
Okay. Do, uh, any members of council have any question for our recreational director, Mister Paul Burke? Any questions for him? Okay. We'll be going to, uh, I don't want to skip nobody in that order. Uh, I believe that we go over to, is it our law director, Mister Tim Riley?
I don't think more this evening.
All right. Uh, thank you, Tim. Uh, Tim, appreciate that. And do we have, um, uh, Police Chief Kay on the line?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay. The floor is yours, uh, Chief.
I don't have a report tonight, though. Thank you, sir.
Okay. We're going next to our, uh, fire, uh, Fire Department Chief, Chief Stroke. Is he on the line?
I have no report this evening. Thank you.
Oh, man. Okay, we're moving right along, two chiefs in a row. All right. Uh, we're going over to our Finance Director. Uh, Barb, do you have any report for tonight? Is our Finance Director on the line?
He says she is. He just texted me to say she is.
He's muted.
Did, did you get, did you get on the line, Jason?
She's on. She's just muted. I asked her to unmute.
Okay, we'll give, we'll, we'll give her a minute here. Or we, or we come back. Okay.
Mister Dudley?
Uh, go ahead, uh, go ahead, Barb. Are you up?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mister Dudley. I had to unmute. I apologize.
No, no problem. Do you have a report for us tonight?
Yes, I'm asking for council support on, um, ordinance fifty and fifty-one, which is the, uh, average pay fund for the police and fire department. And then with that, you have my report.
We appreciate it, Barb. Uh, up next, we have, um, Mister Dave Crock, our city engineer. Do you have a report for us tonight?
Thank you, Mister Dudley. Just want to, uh, request support of ordinance forty-five, twenty-twenty-one. That's my report.
All right. Thank you, Mister Crock. Uh, next we have, uh, Kathy Parsons, our Senior Director. Do you have a report for us tonight? Is she on the line?
I don't see her, Mister Dudley.
I don't believe she is. I know Noreen says she has a report, so.
Okay, we'll go to her next. Uh, next we move over to our Economic Developer, Noreen Kuban. Do you have a report for us tonight, Noreen? Is she on, Jason?
She texted.
She was earlier.
I wonder if she got kicked off.
We, we'll give, we'll, we'll give her about, uh, give her, uh, about a minute there. I'll give her a few to come on because I, I believe she has something she wanted to say. Well, we'll come back to it. Do we have, uh, Mister Mark Morrow, our Building Commissioner? Is he on tonight?
Mister Chairman, Noreen is on.
Okay. All right, Noreen, uh, Noreen Kuban, our Economic Developer. The floor is yours. Is she there? Is she on the line?
I got Noreen on my cell phone.
All right, all right, Tim. Good enough. Uh, go ahead, Noreen. The floor is yours.
Can you hear me? Yes, uh, I'm looking for support of ordinance number forty-seven, two thousand twenty-one. And this is to rezone the property Kmart and the acreage to the west.
Excuse me, Tim. Tim, could you, could you turn the volume up? Excuse me, uh, Noreen. Tim, could you turn the volume up a little?
All right, go ahead.
That's as high as I can turn the volume. Is that better?
Go ahead. We can't hear you that good, but go ahead, Noreen. That's the best we can do.
This forty-seven, two thousand twenty-one is to rezone the Kmart property and the vacant land to the west. As the mayor mentioned, from retail to U-eleven B industrial park. Um, similar to what ICP is doing at Highland Park, the former City View site. And then the ordinance will go immediately into committee and then we'll have public hearings. And that concludes my report.
All right. Uh, thank you, Miss Kuban. Thank you, Noreen. We appreciate that. And with that, uh, put that to Ways and Means Committee.
We'll do that when we read it, Frank.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right. And with that, I, I believe that concludes our report from the mayor and his directors for tonight. Uh, next we have comments, uh, by citizens on tonight's agenda. Only what we're voting on tonight. No other conversation, just what has been voted on tonight. And Barb, will you read the rules?
Comments shall be strictly limited to brief statements, not to exceed five minutes, with comments limited to legislation on the current evening's agenda. No citizen shall speak more than once.
All right. Before we ask anybody who wants to speak, Tom, would you be the timekeeper tonight?
Yes, Mister Chairman.
You know what? We skipped Mark Seikah.
Oh, we did? Okay. Man, all right. I thought we got it. Let's go back. So, uh, we have our Service Director on now, uh, Mark Seikah for the, uh, Service Department. Go ahead, uh, Mark. You got the floor. I apologize for skipping you.
No worries. You guys can hear me, okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'm gonna start off with, I'm sure what's on a lot of people's minds. Uh, we've had some trash issues the last couple of weeks. Had some spirited, um, emails exchanged with, uh, myself and, um, um, Kimball. When that didn't work, I asked them for a face-to-face meeting, which we ended up, we did have. I explained to them, you know, what the problems we are having here with the, uh, trash being left behind. Some missed stops, some promises of going back to get stuff and it doesn't get picked up. Blowing out of the truck again when they're, uh, transferring to the hopper. Um, after I was talking with them for a while, um, Don Johnson stopped and he says, you know, I gotta tell you something. He says, I don't have workers. I can't get workers. He says, you know, the, the way the, um, it's set up now with the unemployment benefits, people are being paid to, you know, you know, to stay at home. He says, I can't find somebody to sweep the floor. He says, my route supervisors have been in the trucks for the last four months doing the routes to ensure that these stops are picked up. Now, they're running behind. He says he sees this continuing for, for the foreseeable future until, you know, the rules change. Um, making sure that we weren't the only ones experiencing this. I did reach out to multiple cities. Bedford, Bedford Heights, Orange, Walton Hills, um, Maple Heights. Uh, some that are with Kimball, some are with Waste Management, some others. And everyone is experiencing the same issue. Um, I understand people are upset. They should be. We're paying for a service and, um, it's not being fulfilled totally because of the late pickups. I mean, they are getting the stuff, but a lot of times it's late. And, uh, they have, they have a couple of new drivers. He says, they set up, um, you know, some interviews for people. They'll have eight interviews set up and nobody shows up. He says, there are people show up, they hire them, they work for one day and they just go home and never come back. Um, I know it's not what people want to hear, but it's just, uh, it's a fact, you know, uh, of the way it is right now. So, uh, we're working with them as best we can. I have my foreman out continually daily. Even had him out on Saturday to, uh, make sure that some of these missed stops were picked up. We're doing everything we can. Uh, obviously, we're in a special situation, um, with this COVID. Hopefully, this goes away here shortly. And, uh, we can get back to, uh, some, some type of normalcy. But again, um, we're doing the best we can with, and they're doing the best they can with what they have. So that's where that's set right now. Um, along with trash, uh, a small item, we're gonna add another can, uh, across from, uh, right by Turney Town, across from the one bar over there. That's the people were having some complaints about glass and stuff, so. Yep. We're gonna add a city can over there. Um, grass cutting, uh, still playing catch-up along the same lines. You know, we've struggled getting workers as well. Having a hard time filling some of these part-time positions. We do have two more coming right out of high school. They should be with us shortly, so that will help. Uh, but again, without workers, folks, I, I understand, you know, you, you have to understand, there's only so much we can do. Um, along with grass cutting, uh, driving the streets, just a mass amount of grass is being blown in the street. I don't know if it's just residents and/or contractors. Um, but it's not just aesthetics, you know, when we're talking about blowing grass in the street, it, you know, there's, it clogs the sewers. So we need to keep the grass out of the street. Spend a few minutes to either sweep it up or just blow it back up on the tree lawn. It actually is good for the grass. So hopefully more folks can, um, help us out with that. Uh, so good news, uh, patching. Uh, we are pretty much complete in the city. I know we have, uh, a couple of streets that were rehitting, um, because of, we got done early and then, uh, the snow came and we had to put the plows back out. Um, so a couple of streets that we had to touch up, but essentially we are done. We used approximately, um, two hundred and fifty tons of hot mix. Uh, this is extremely early, um, to get done. Uh, very proud of my foreman and the, the workers down there. Um, again, it's a thankless job, you know, you, you know, you, you, you're there to patch, so you're supposed to patch. But two hundred and fifty tons is, is quite a bit of material that, uh, these, uh, workers did for us. Um, that's gonna cost me lunch because they got it done so fast and it's gonna be well worth it. Uh, now that we're pretty much done with that, we'll be moving on to some other miscellaneous items that we have, uh, backed up on. Uh, one of them would be getting the street sweepers back out. Um, we downed them twofold. One, um, because we wanted to get everybody on patch and get the streets patched as fast as we could. Two, both the machines needed extensive repairs to the boxes. Our, uh, welder's been very busy down there welding in some new plate, um, pieces of metal and stuff to shore up these things. They're very old. And, uh, my guys do a great job keeping them on the road. Um, so they'll be back out. They've been, they've been off the street for a little bit. You probably could tell there's some, you see the trash starting to pile up and stuff here and there. So we'll be back out there in force. Uh, running those machines as, as much as we can and getting as much as we can cleaned up. Um, some of the miscellaneous items we'll be moving on to is, uh, some trees. I know, uh, one of the councilmen called me about some signs they had just finished up. We'll be putting those up this week. Um, so a bunch of miscellaneous items that we'll be getting, we're getting to. Um, had a couple of complaints, um, one on McCracken about, uh, amount of semis on the road. Uh, obviously did checking. It's a dedicated truck route, so they're allowed to be there. Uh, she was concerned about, again, the houses shaking from the, uh, from the trucks going by. Spoke with Chief Kay about watching, uh, watching some of these drivers and their speeds, maybe that could help. Understanding the roads, the joints are failing and we haven't patched, but it's not exactly smooth. And those trucks and amount of weight that they carry, it does create some, uh, noise and, uh, some vibrations, I'm sure. Also, I spoke with Jim Sickles because that is a county road. Uh, we're looking into some, a program that helps, uh, that'll pay for, actually like, um, they'll pay half. It'll actually pay um, for the material. We'll have to pay for the labor to fix some of those joints. So I'm, uh, starting to work with him on that. I also had a, a resident on Elmwood contact about, uh, the condition of the street, uh, which is rated poor, that one. And several others in the city, uh, we are, uh, we're aware of it. As of now, I've been told, um, no plans to repave any streets. We're still finishing up some stuff, some of the chip ceiling from twenty-twenty. I know we have, uh, phase four, multi-phase four and multi-phase five going on right now along with the Broadway waterline. Uh, best we could do right now is to keep the streets patched as best we can. I get it and I understand the road's rough. There's several in the city that have to be done, so we're working, working for that, but without the funding right now, we can't really do nothing about that. Um, Saturday, this past Saturday, we had our household shred event. Um, uh, extremely popular. If some of those maybe don't, aren't, aren't aware of it, but, uh, for two weeks, we, we collect household hazardous waste. Um, and then on that, the second Saturday, we do the, um, paper shred event. We had about nearly, it was like two hundred and seventy-five people that showed up. It's, it's a, it's a show down there. These, my guys hump down there. They move really fast. Cars will be lined up all the way up and down McCracken to get in there. We get them in, get them out, get the paper shredded. We shredded, um, ten thousand one hundred and twenty tons, um, yeah, it's, um, ten thousand one hundred and twenty pounds of paper. We shredded in one day. So it's a real, uh, um, it's a real crowd pleaser. Everybody really likes it down there. So, um, if you haven't experienced it, maybe, um, um, the next one is coming up. It'll be in September. It starts September seventh through the tenth, then the thirteenth through the eighteenth, and the eighteenth is the shred day. Now, the shred day is always the, the second Saturday and it's only that, on that Saturday. That's from nine till noon. For those that you don't, um, haven't, um, done that, like I was saying, um, and along with the, uh, shred event, um, it's, it's put out through a grant. Uh, Pat applies for this, Pat Salami applies for this. Um, we get it twice a year. We get two, uh, shred days. And along with that, they, uh, give us some money for awareness and educational materials. We use up that throughout the year. The district is trying to promote recycle right and everything is not, um, you, you cannot recycle everything. So to be, you know, pay attention to what's on the lid of your garbage can and only put those items that really, it says right on the lid, or you can go on the Solid Waste District, uh, website and that gives you a little more, uh, a little more education on some of the, um, items that you could put in the recycle. Um, I believe, and then, yeah, with that, you have my report. Thank you.
Hey, we appreciate that. Do anybody got any questions for the Service Director, Mister Mark, uh, Seikah? We have, uh,
I do.
Councilman Tagreen.
Okay.
What? Hi, Mark.
You talk, which one first?
Okay, I get first. Okay. Um, two things. Uh, just want to back up to the, uh, garbage. I have friends that I was over in, uh, Seven Hills and also Old Brooklyn. I got the same situ- they have the same situation with Kimball as we do. It was on Saturday. Nobody picked up their trash. It was supposed to be done on Thursday. And it, it, it's, it's the same story everywhere. You can't get help. And, and, and I put my hat off to you. I know the problems you're running into. And I hear that story, not only from their restaurants, every day on the news, same thing. And that there. I know you're fighting a battle there and I appreciate what you're doing. Also, I just have a question. Are we having any plans for any of these striping being done shortly? Because there's some streets that really, really need it, our main streets.
Yeah, thanks, Frank. Um, yeah, um, a hundred percent, we are going to be starting, um, well, going back to the trash. Yes, we're certainly not the only ones that are experiencing this and, and the restaurants are a hundred percent right. If anybody goes anywhere to any store, you'll see that manpower and girl power is down right now. So, yeah, that is, it's just across the board. Everybody's struggling with that. Um, as far as striping, um, I want to be speaking with Barb Iro here shortly. I actually spoke with, um, um, the Director of Maple Heights. I thought we could try and get a combination, you know, double city, get a better price. So we're gonna be working with, um, Maple Heights and trying to get a bit out there. And I agree with you, some streets that have to be striped, but, and part of the miscellaneous, um, that we're gonna get, be getting to will be crosswalks and stuff, which we take care of at the, at the service garage. Now, we can't, we don't have the equipment to stripe the large roads and stuff like that, but. But crosswalks and stop bars and some miscellaneous smaller items, school zones, stuff like that, we take care of in-house. But yeah, so I'll be speaking with Barb Byrow on that and hopefully we can get some striping done here soon.
Thank you very much.
Lee, Councilman Donahue was next.
Okay, Mark, you brought up McCracken. Okay, I've been fighting that for a while. That's my ward. I realize it's a county road, but is there any way maybe the speed limit could be reduced to 30 miles an hour? Or maybe limit the vehicles for local, local use instead of just going up and down there?
I believe that would have to defer to the Police Department on that because they make all signs changes. Anything that goes with the roads and speed limits and stuff that, I'm not saying they control it, but there's any changes, ask go through the Police Department.
And restrictions for the, the type of vehicles or not, or the, if they're only there for local? Like I understand it has to, they have to go to the hospital for certain things, but just big semis just going up and down the road. I mean, can it be limited?
Again, I think we'd have to ask, defer to the police on that. And I do agree with you, the amount of heavy truck traffic is incredible. And now the Broadway's being worked on. I think people are looking for shortcuts and coming through the backside of the city and stuff. But possibly Chief K can expound on that a little bit for you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd have to defer again to the Legal Department. I don't think you can change or limit anybody going on county or state routes as far as where they can go and what they can carry. I don't know how we'd go about changing it, to be honest with you, I'd have to check with the Law Department.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do any members of council, any other members have any questions? Mr. PsychCon. Okay, there's no more hands up there, Jason?
Avery Johnson.
Johnson has a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. PsychCon, this is Avery Johnson, how you doing, sir?
Good, sir, welcome aboard. Hold on a second, yep, you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, yeah, welcome aboard, I can hear you.
Well, thank you again, PsychCon, I'm glad to be aboard. I would like to just meet with you because I have gotten a lot of complaints off Elmwood. I know that is a budget issue by getting that street paved. But I would like to meet with you and talk to you about some ideals that may have. But at the same time, I want to thank you again too. And I know I'll leave that for my comments, but thank you again for what you're doing.
You call my office anytime, we can, we set up an appointment, I can stop at the house, however you want to work it, absolutely.
No problem, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Blake, are there any more hands up from members of council?
I do not see any.
Okay, now what we're going to do, we're going to go back to comments by citizens on tonight's agenda. And once again, Barb, I'd like for you to read the rules. And remember, this is only comments dealing with what's on the agenda tonight. No other comments is allowed. Barb, read the rules, please.
Comments shall be strictly limited to brief statements, not to exceed five minutes, with comments limited to legislation on the current evening's agenda. No citizen shall speak more than once.
All right, with that, I thank you, Barb. And do we have any hands up there, Councilman Blake? For anybody want to speak on tonight's agenda and tonight's agenda only?
I do not see any right now.
I'm seeing any either.
You don't see none? All right, with that said, then we will get into tonight's ordinance and resolutions. Okay, all right. Resolution number 45-2021, would you please read it, Barb?
Point of order, Mr. Dudley?
Yeah.
It's not a resolution, it's ordinance.
Good correction ordinance, thank you, Mr. Riley. Ordinance number 45-2021, thank you for the correction.
Ordinance number 45-2021, sponsored by Mayor Matthew Burke, co-sponsored by council persons Nanatovich, Taglerini, Blake and Vaughn. An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to do all things necessary to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and or local transportation improvement programs for the multi-street reconstruction and waterline replacement Phase Six project, including but not limited to executing any and all applications, agreements and or contracts as may be required by the OPWC in order to secure the loan funds requested per the application as prepared by City Engineer David Crock.
All right, thank you, Barb. I would like to make a motion to consider by title, consider my title. Can I get a second?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Councilman Vaughn.
I would like to make an amendment to this ordinance, please.
Okay, you'd like to make a motion to amend this ordinance?
Yeah, yeah, on the one. The six, whereas the City of Cleveland's share of this project would be 65% of $3,153,000, not $3,153. A typo was made and we need to add another zero.
All right.
If I could have a second on that, I'd appreciate it.
Do we have a second? Okay, Barb, could you read the roll call for the amendment made on ordinance, correction, made on ordinance 45-2021 by Councilman Tom Vaughn? Can we have a roll call?
Yes, please, I could not hear who seconded it.
Chuck Donahue.
Uh, Councilman Donahue seconded it.
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Dudley vote yes.
Uh huh.
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes. Okay, and the minute passed, the amendment passed with six yes votes. Now, we're moving on, once again. We are ready at the ordinance, I'd like to make a motion. I didn't hear you, Barb.
We have to consider by title then.
Good, I'll do it again, all right. I'd like to make a motion to consider by title.
Dudley?
A second.
Can't you hear me?
No, I can hear, I said, did I get a second?
You don't need a second.
You don't need a second.
You don't need one.
Okay, we don't need a second, all right. Ken, okay, I'd like to suspend the three reading rule. Motion, motion to suspend the three reading rule.
I'm sorry, we didn't do the motion to consider by title.
I thought you said we didn't have to do it, do it.
No, you have to vote, Mike.
We'll do it again. Like to make a motion to consider by title. Can I get a second? Did I get a second? I don't need the second, roll call, please.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Tom Vaughn votes yes.
Okay, we have six yes votes. Like to suspend the three reading rule? Can I get a, have a roll call?
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
We have six yes votes for spending a three reading rule. Next, can we, I'd like to make the waiver of Rule 24. Can I have a roll call?
I'm sorry, Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Okay, we have six yes votes on the waiver of Rule 24. Next, I would like to make on the adoption, can we have a roll call?
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Tom Vaughn votes yes.
Okay, so ordinance number 45-2021 passes with six yes votes. All right, next we have ordinance number 46-2021, can you read it, Barb?
Ordinance number 46-2021, sponsored by Mayor Matthew Burke, co-sponsored by council persons Nanatovich, Taglerini, Lake and Vaughn. An emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to apply for a grant available by the Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership, created by the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Act of 1998 for the Garfield Heights Police Department.
Thank you. Because, make a motion to consider by title? Can I have a second?
No, you don't need one, Mike.
We don't need a second again. Make a motion to consider by title.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Title consideration passive with six yes votes. Suspend, excuse me, suspend the three reading rule?
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Suspension of three reading rule passes with six yes votes. Next we have waiver of Rule 24.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Waiver of Rule 24 passes with six yes votes. Next we have on the adoption.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Ordinance number 46-2021 passes with six yes votes. Right. Next, Barb, we have ordinance number 47-2021, could you please read it?
Ordinance number 47-2021, sponsored by Mayor Matthew Burke, co-sponsored by council persons Nanatovich, Taglerini, Blake and Vaughn. An ordinance amending the zoning code of the City of Garfield Heights, known as ordinance number 121-1962, provided, providing for the revision of the building zone map by changing the zoning of certain parcels as follows.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Vaughn.
At this time, I would like to move this ordinance number 47-2021 to the Ways and Means Committee.
All right, Councilman Vaughn, I'd like to have a roll call, Barb.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Mike Dudley vote yes.
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 Lake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes. Okay, the motion to move it to the Ways and Means Committee, pass it with six yes votes. Okay, next we have suspension of the three reading rule. Can I have a roll call, Barb?
Point of order, Councilman, hold on, point of order, Councilman Dudley. Once it's moved to the committee, you can't vote on waiving the three. When it comes out of committee, you can waive the three reading rule.
All right, I got you, I appreciate that, appreciate that, Tim. Okay, so ordinance number 47-2021 is going to be moved to the Ways and Means Committee. All right, moving right along. Next we have ordinance number 48-2021, Barb, would you please read it?
Ordinance number 48-2021, sponsored by Mayor Matthew A. Burke, co-sponsored by council persons Nanatovich, Taglerini, Blake and Vaughn. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor or his designee to purchase one 2021 Chevrolet Tahoe from Ganley Chevrolet of Aurora LLC.
Thank you, Barb. Consider by title? Can I have a roll call? Oh, I don't need the roll call, just consider by title.
Okay, sorry, I'm jumping again. Okay, Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Okay, suspension of the three reading rule? Can I have a roll call?
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Okay, suspension of three, did we get everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, suspension of three reading rule passes with six yes votes. Waiver of Rule 24, Barb, can we have a roll call?
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Waiver of Rule 24 passes with six yes votes. On the adoption, can we have a roll call, Barb, roll call, Barb?
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Ordinance number 48-2021 passes with six yes votes. Next, ordinance number 49-2021, can you please read the ordinance, Barb?
Number 49-2021, sponsored by Mayor Matthew A. Burke, co-sponsored by council persons Nanatovich, Taglerini, Blake and Vaughn. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor or his designee to enter into an agreement with North Coast Two Way Radio for the outfitting of one 2021 Chevrolet Tahoe with K9 unit equipment.
Okay, consider by title? Can we have a roll call, Barb?
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Title consideration passes with six yes votes. Next we have suspension of the three reading rule. Barb, can we have a roll call?
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Suspension of three reading rule passes with six yes votes. Next we have waiver of Rule 24, can we have a roll call, Barb?
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Waiver of Rule 24 passes with six yes votes. Now on the adoption, can we have a roll call, Barb?
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Ordinance number 49-2021 passes with six yes votes. Next we have ordinance 50-2021, can you please read the ordinance, Barb?
Ordinance number 58-2021, sponsored by Mayor Matthew Burke, co-sponsored by council as a whole. An emergency ordinance. An emergency ordinance amending ordinance number fifty-one twenty twenty to update the salaries of the police department for twenty twenty-one in accordance with section forty-one of the Garfield Heights Charter.
Thank you, Barb. Consider by title?
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson? Johnson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Okay, consider by title passes with six yes votes. Next we have suspension of the three reading rule.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Suspension of the, uh, three reading rule passes with six yes votes. Next we have waiver of Rule twenty-four.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Tom Vaughn votes yes.
Waiver of Rule twenty-four passes with six yes votes. Now on the adoption.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Ordinance number fifty dash twenty twenty-one passes with six yes votes. Next we have. Ordinance number fifty-one dash twenty twenty-one. Barb, can you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number fifty-one dash twenty twenty-one, sponsored by Mayor Matthew Burke, co-sponsored by council as a whole. An emergency ordinance amending ordinance number fifty-two twenty twenty to reflect increased salaries of the fire department for twenty twenty-one in accordance with section forty-one of the Garfield Heights Charter.
Thank you, Barb. Consider by title?
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Title consideration passes with six yes votes. Next we have. Suspension of the three reading rule.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Do we need a waiver of Rule twenty-four on this one?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Next we have waiver of Rule twenty-four.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Okay, waiver of Rule twenty-four passes with six yes votes. Now on the adoption.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Ordinance number fifty-one dash twenty twenty-one passes tonight with six yes votes. Now. We're gonna move on. Before we move on, I wanna make it perfectly clear. She's gonna read the rules. We will not entertain anything on a first-time nature, absolutely not. You would have to spoke to your member of council or somebody within administration before you bring it to the floor. Now. Next we have. Comments by citizens. Barb, would you please read the rule?
Comments shall be restricted to any problem a citizen has, which has previously been submitted to his or her councilperson or to the city hall department directly involved. If submission of a problem to a city hall department or a councilperson is made, and there is a lack of service rendered in this regard, the problem may then be presented during comments from citizens at a future meeting. It is the intention of this rule that no request of a first nature is presented on the floor at this time. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. No citizen shall be heard more than once.
All right, thank you there. Do we have any hands up tonight, Jason, or at the time, do y'all see anybody hands up?
Uh, Mr. Suster?
Uh, thank you very much. First of all, I'd, I'd like to, uh, wish Avery Johnson a lot of luck in re, in being appointed councilperson in Ward four.
Thank you, Mrs. Suster.
And I'd also like to thank Mr. Michael Clyde for his, uh, bravery in, in taking care of that fire. Uh, that, that, that was a great thing. I heard people talking about, uh, you know, people, some of the services that are up to snuff, and, and I can understand what, what, uh, Mr. Burke is going through as far as trying to get people. As you drive around, you see businesses that have never ever had signs up, you know, now hiring or things like that. So, you know, every, restaurants and everybody have, has a problem with that. My next, my next, uh, point might hurt some people, but it, uh, I, I think it needs to be brought. I haven't heard anybody from city council, uh, bring this up to, uh, the law director, mayor, or anything like that. And that is Shayla Davis leaving city council. I think legislation needs to be drawn up.
Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Suster, you have spoken, I know you know the rule.
I have talked to everybody.
Have you spoken?
I'm speaking, please.
No, 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 Mr. Have you spoken to a member of council or somebody in administration?
Yes, I have. I've talked to Mr. Vaughn about this. I've talked to the mayor about it. I know, I know the rules of council, so.
Double checking.
Let me speak, please. Let me speak. Let me speak, please.
All right, no problem.
He has spoken to me.
I'm just double checking on that.
I know, Mike. Yes, Barb, Melon?
Can we please have Mr. Suster's address?
Eleven thousand Brunswick Avenue? Let me know when you're ready, Barb.
Oh, that, that's fine. Thank you, Mr. Suster.
I, I really thought that probably the councilman from Ward five would have brought this to the attention of the other members of council. But I think we need to go back after Shayla Davis to recoup the monies that the city of Garfield uh, had paid her for, even though she was doing fraud. And, uh, I don't know, uh, I think Mr. Riley will probably have to do this. But I would like to hear the, hear a report on this within the next few council meetings saying what we're doing to recoup our money. You know, I, I've always heard, well, being on city council, you know, that we, our finances, we're in dire straits. Well, here's a place that we can pick up some, some, uh, money that, that should not have been paid to somebody that was defrauding the, the city of Garfield Heights.
Mr. Chairman? This is Tim Riley. I can report on this right now. Mr. Suster, I've done extensive research on this issue, and we cannot recollect the funds back. She did the work. She was de facto councilperson. I have case law. I can cite to you if you need it, but we cannot collect the money back. It is not possible under the status of the law.
Well, could you send me a copy of that, please?
Sure, I can tell you right now. It's a statement.
I'm not asking you to talk to me about it. Send me a bit. I wanna read it.
Okay. I mean, that is my legal opinion. I'm sorry if you don't agree with it.
Okay, well, I've heard legal opinions before that I didn't agree with, and after a while, I found out they were wrong also. I mean, I know you don't go into a courtroom and say, well, we lost already. Let's, well, let's go on with this case. And, and tell.
I'm not saying that we lost already, uh, uh, Mr. Suster. What I'm telling you is, I've done the research on the law and made a determination. Unfortunately, you don't like my determination.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Well, I'm, I myself, even though I'm still not on city council, I still look out for the best interest of this, the people of the city of Garfield Heights.
As do I.
And, and if, if we were able to recoup that money, it could be used in, in projects that we need throughout the city.
All right.
And that's all, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your time. Oh, and I want to also thank, uh, Mayor Burke for the proclamation for my wife and myself. Uh, as he said, uh, Wednesday, I'll be celebrating my eightieth birthday. And on Wednesday, Thursday, we'll be celebrating our, uh, what is it, sixty, no, fortieth, sixtieth, uh, wedding anniversary. So, uh, I wanna thank you, thank you, Mayor, for, for the proclamation.
Okay, thank you. And happy anniversary to, and your, your wife as well. Happy anniversary. Um, do we have any other hands up out there? Um, uh, Mr. Uh, Blake or Mr. Vaughn?
Renee Bolton.
Okay, you're next. Have you spoken with a member of your, um, on the council or the administration, Ms. Bolton?
Yeah.
Okay.
Renee Bolton, five seven four nine, Turney Road. Um, I wanted to clarify what I was asking, uh, Mr. Taglerini regarding the Memorial Day Parade. Um, I was not asking for, um, political signage to be on vehicles. I am in contact with someone from another city who has an organization where they do things with the vintage cars. And when I found that out, I, um, of course, let her know about the Memorial Day Parade and, you know, what all was happening with the vintage cars. And she was asking if they could put something on the vehicles to promote the health, uh, health organization that she's, um, her, her nonprofit that she, she has going on, um, in, uh, Maple. And it's, um, promoting men's health, and they use vintage vehicles to get men to come out, um, to look at the vintage cars. I guess it's a guy thing. And when they come out, you know, they can also get blood pressures checked and, and all of that. I was not asking about, um, political signage on cars. I was asking if she could get, if she could put signage on the cars about her nonprofit organization.
That shouldn't be a problem, Ms. Bolton. Um, there are other groups, uh, that'll have some signage for their organizations, so that, that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Do we have any other hands up out there, Jason?
I do not see any.
Okay. And I guess that takes care of the miscellaneous, uh, business, but I wanna mention one thing. I had a young man that I, I saw it a week when I was walking out there. And it's on me that the message didn't get to Councilman Donahue. And with the young man I talked about, I failed to send him the information. But my apology, I, an apology to him and his father. But he was passionate about the, he belonged to the hockey team here in Garfield Heights. And he had mentioned when he turned fourteen, and I totally get in touch with the recreational director. When he, I believe he said he turned fourteen and he was out the program, and he would have liked to have seen it go a little more distant as far as time, uh, far as age. And I believe that was the conversation. But I do apologize that I didn't send him this information a few ago, but that's the comment that he wanted to make, and I believe he lived on Langston. But he definitely say he's gonna be reaching out to us, council representative who is Chuck Donahue, and I apologize to him for not getting information to him sooner. But I, I already done that with him. Okay, and then that concludes the miscellaneous business by the citizens. Now we will go to miscellaneous business by members of council. And I would like to start with Mr. Councilman Tom Vaughn and work our way back down to Ward one, meaning that I would be last. Councilman Vaughn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Dudley. First of all, Mr. Dudley, you've, you've done an excellent job tonight. I know you were thrown into this about an hour before the meeting, and I appreciate you taking the helm tonight and running this meeting so smoothly for us.
Thank you.
Uh, I would like to talk about an incident that happened over on Sunset last week. The end of March, group of neighbors over there were, watched, saw some activity that was going on that was not normal for their area. We met, we discussed it. I turned it over to Chief K. Um, they investigated. They made a, a bus there last week that was very beneficial. And I wanna thank the residents of Sunset for looking out and watching what's going on in their neighborhood. This is about the second or third one I've had in my ward in the past few years, where the residents came, spoke to us, and we were able to get it done. And the fact that they were able to move so quickly. I have to commend the police department and Chief K and the Drug Enforcement League and everybody for what an excellent job. But most of all, I think the residents of Sunset for watching, caring, and making sure that this got turned over to the right authorities. I, I commend you for that. Tomorrow night, I'll be having my block watch at seven PM in the pavilion at St. Monica's. It's supposed to be a beautiful night. Come on up and join us. All are welcome. Uh, we'll be talking about some of the things going on here in the city, and, uh, it's always a good time. And with the COVID's regulations breaking up, please come out, get to know your neighbors again. And this is a good way for everybody to know what's happening in our community. Joe Suster and Donna Suster. Joe, I wanna commend you on your eightieth birthday, and Donna, God love you. Sixty years. You are a saint. I appreciate both of you for all you've done for our community, and may you have many more years together. Mr. Clyde, I don't know if he's still on or not. What an act of bravery, what you did. That is why I have asked that we have a resolution honoring you for what you did. You know, it's very easy to go on social media and just tear things down all the time. It's very easy to come onto comments and be a keyboard warrior and put things down. But here is a man that cared enough about his neighbor. A man who's only lived in the community three years. And he went in, pulled somebody out of a fire. He is a true hero. And it's people like him that make this such a great city. We're gonna be having our parade for Memorial Day on May thirty-first at ten o'clock. I hope to see a lot of people out there. You know, I'm so glad the parade's coming back. Sure, it's not exactly what we're used to, but we're getting it there. Maybe next year we'll be able to march and do the things we did before. But please, come on out. Let's remember those that gave the ultimate sacrifice and gave it all for all of us. Um. That's about all I have. I want everybody to be safe next weekend. Drive safely, enjoy your families. And most of all, take a moment out, say a prayer, giving thanks for what everybody has.
At one time.
Thank you. I'm done, Mr. Dudley.
Next we, Mark, thank you there. Next we will have, I believe, is, uh, Councilman Taglerini aboard six.
Thank you. I've got a couple of things I'd like to talk about tonight. Uh, pick up where Mr. Vaughn left off at the parade. One of my positions with the parade committee is, uh, with the vintage cars. Uh, I do have, uh, quite a few coming. Looks like we're gonna have a beautiful day at the eight-day forecast that I was seeing this morning. So I look for a good turnout. Hopefully, we're gonna have a great turnout on the sides of the roads, uh, for the parade. I am asking all the vintage car people that'll be coming to uh, arrive about nine fifteen on the Turney Road entrance to, on Maple Leaf and that. That way we can set it up and have the lineup also. Next, I'd like to welcome Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson, I know you're gonna be a great member to the city of Garfield Heights, not member of the Garfield Heights.
But thank you.
Legislation portion of it, with your background and all you have to offer. If I could help in any way, shape, or form, don't hesitate. We shall.
Will do. Will do. Thank you.
Mr. Suster, I want to thank you for all your years of service, city. Uh, you're an incredible man. Happy anniversary, happy birthday. Super Mountmore to go. Got a lot of young heart. Mr. Clyde, I don't even know what to say to you. You did such a wonderful thing. You are the hero in Garfield Heights today. Thank you. Thank you very much. And with that, I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Dudley.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Taglerini. And next we have Councilman Jason Blake out of Ward Five. The floor is yours, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, would just like to, um, wish everybody an upcoming, uh, safe and happy holiday weekend. I would like to encourage everybody to come out and see the parade. Uh, I'd like to acknowledge some citizens who took the time and did a lot of work at the Memorial Plaza. Jen Narones, uh, PJ Narones, uh, Sherry Rasmussen, uh, and Bill Douglas as well. Um, the area was mulched, power washed down, um, and it looks really good for the upcoming ceremony. Um, I'd also like to thank Weldon P.C. as he will be live streaming the parade at GarfieldHeights.info, um, on Monday. It'll also be recorded, uh, to be viewed at a later date. Would like to wish Mr. Suster a happy birthday and his, he and his wife a happy anniversary. Um, and as well with Mr. Clyde, I would just like to thank him for his, uh, heroic actions on the date that they occurred. Lastly, I'd like to thank, uh, Mayor Burke for, uh, adding more diversity, equity, inclusion training with, uh, Dr. Fletcher Crawford in the future. And that's my report.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Blake. And next we have, I believe, our newest member of the city council. Welcome aboard. We have Councilman Avery Johnson. You're up, Councilman.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Um, first of all, I want to say thank you for, um, the city council members that voted to allow me to represent Ward Four, which I'm extremely grateful. I know that is, uh, some work that must be done. And, uh, I hope and pray that, uh, I will be a asset to the city council in getting the work done for the city of Garfield as far as, and for the residents of, uh, Ward Four. I'd like to take this time to say thank you again to Mr. Suster. Uh, thank you for your many years of service and happy birthday and happy anniversary as well. Um, I want to thank again to, uh, Mr. Dudley, Michael Dudley and the, uh, mayor for the swearing in ceremony that I went through the other day and, uh, my family, my wife, my children, they say thank you as well. I hope and pray everybody have a happy Memorial Day and, uh, oh, one other thing too, I did notice, uh, while I was out today that, uh, grass was being cut in Ward Four and, uh, it is much appreciated. And again, thank you, everybody.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Avery. And once again, welcome aboard. And next we have, I, we will, well, we have Councilman Mike Manadovich, who's not here tonight. So we will move on to Ward Two where we have Councilman Charles Donahue. The floor is yours, Councilman.
Okay. First, uh, welcome, Mr. Uh, Mr. Johnson to counsel. You have, you're going to have a rough job. I'd like to congratulate the newest police officer. I'm sorry, I cannot say your last name. Uh, congratulations to, uh, Mr. Clyde, that, for saving lives. Um, it, it takes a real hero for that. Yes. And on to, uh, Joe Suster, congratulations. I don't know how your wife put up with you that long. Uh, and I'd have swore you were more than eighty years old. Uh, but congratulations on both parts. And she's the one that needs the award, not you. Sorry. On to, uh, on to other notes. Um, I made up a list and it's very lengthy, but I'm throwing it aside. I'm not going to do it. Um, I just want everybody to have a good, enjoyable Memorial Day weekend and be safe. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Uh, we thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Donahue, Councilman Donahue. We appreciate that and also appreciate all the information that was brought from all of our members of council. And I want to thank, uh, my colleagues tonight because this was a good council meeting and I think it went well. And I appreciate the help. I appreciate the signals if something didn't go right. And I thank, uh, the law director calling stuff to my attention as well. So I thank you guys. Thank all of y'all as well. All right. Tonight, um, I want to mention something. I want y'all to keep our family in prayer on Ward One. Y'all heard about Ms. Jasmine, uh, trying to pronounce her right, Cabell, uh, Cabell, that's her name. She lost her life in a senseless act of violence in Ward One community approximately around the fifteenth of May, I believe. And it's ironic because we was calling attention to the senseless violence that we have in the city of Garfield Heights. And on May the eighth, we had a stop of violence. And because of space, I know some of my colleagues wasn't able to make it to the, but I know they had notified me and they wished us the best and they kept our community in their prayers. I want to thank the mayor, uh, Mayor Burke for coming out, uh, Councilman Blake for coming out. And I may be leaving somebody out, but I know Councilman Vaughn had a previous engagement as well to, uh, Councilman Donahue. And I thank Councilman Avery Johnson for also attending. It was a great show and you can also watch it, um, but let me don't skip somebody. I appreciate Weldon P.C. that they streamed it live and they placed it also on YouTube. So you can go back and watch it, you know? It was a great program. I believe we put the message. But just to show how violence has become so bad in our community, I had a friend of mine who was there and I will not mention his name. While he was attending a program, by the time he got back home, he lived in Maple Heights and I believe there was two people killed on the street. That is what we are coming to right now. It's no joke out there, people. We have to take it seriously. When you see something happen, like the councilman said, a house would notice in his ward, something wasn't right about the house. They reported that. Had they not turned that in, it would have been possibly, it could have been a shootout between drug dealers or something. Your eyes is the eyes that we can't see everything. And sometimes you got to make the correction and not rely that we do it all the time. We drive by, we stop, but we don't see everything. You know what your neighbor is next door to. You know about your neighbor, right? You know your street better than we know your street and we do not live on it. So you have to be vigilant. That's the key word. It's not my community or council community. It's our community. It's not the mayor's community. It's our community. And we all have a responsibility to maintain the cleanliness of our community and to maintain the safety in our community. We have that. And I ask you that you keep that family in prayer because that was horrific what happened to her. I just can't imagine it, you know? And I did get opportunity to speak to the family. With that, I would like to also mention, uh, I thank Mr. Clyde. I'll tell you, he's a brave cat. We, we, the whole term word. He's a brave individual and that was selflessness that he did what he did because he might have didn't make it out there himself. So with that, my heart go out to you and I appreciate you getting in there and protecting or saving whoever you did and being able, God blessing you to bring your life. So that's why I say God put people in certain spots at certain times for a reason and you were put there for a reason, Mr. Clyde. And to show what your reason was. Also, once again, I congratulate our new colleague, Councilman Avery Johnson. And I tell you, welcome aboard. I don't see a lot of gray hair now, but my hair was black and I had a hair full of hair on the top fourteen years ago. But I wish you the best and you're going to be all right. And I'm going to tell you, people, it's not an easy job. It's not an easy job and no respect, you know? But I think we all work hard to do the best we can for you all and y'all's safety. I don't think nobody here would jeopardize any of y'all's safety. I don't believe that will be the case. I want to mention too, Forsdale Park, that park is not a dog park. They, uh, I, I, I thank, uh, Mr. Sycon for putting up the, the new sign out there or I believe it was put up already, telling you to not take your dog. Our children plays in that park. That's why the sign is. That's why the swings is there. So we definitely need you to not walk and allow your dogs to use the bathroom on that property. Second thing, if you are walking your dogs in the street, take that bag with you. When your dog use the restroom, I call it outside, you need to clean up behind them. Don't leave it in nobody yard for them to clean up. Because once a dog mark his territory, every dog can come by, it's going to mark that territory as well. And we, all the animals love and know that happen. So clean up behind them. And if you see signs posted at any recreational spot, no pets on our property, do not take them on it. That means children play. And they touch things and they put their hands in their mouth. So let's keep that in, in mind too as well. I want to go down my, my road here so I don't miss out on anything. Also, we will as well be returning to our block watch and I want to say, uh, every member of council would done a block watch. I either watch it on Zoom or I tend to, and it is great information they put out. And we ourselves will be returning to our town hall meeting around the first week of June. And we will be spaced, socially spaced, so that we don't have to worry about violating any policies that may still exist. And also, Memorial Day Parade. I tell you, that group, uh, I don't remember all their names, but they put a lot of work into this program and I would love to see as many people come out as possible and all on the side of the road and let's, hey, let's go ahead and let them know we appreciate it by being there as well. And I would say on top of that, um, congratulations to the new officer that we have. Um, congratulations to the former council member who served all them years because council is not easy. And I tell you, it's not easy at all. So my congratulation for him finishing approximately, I believe, what, twenty or thirty years there? Thirty years in council? Uh, what was it, Mr. Vaughn?
Thirty years.
Thirty years. I tell you, phew, that's, that's a long time. So it's not easy to. It wears on you, tears on you, but hey, you keep it going. Could you believe you're making a difference? Also, remember Memorial Day is about your vets. Pay your respects to your vets, you know? Keep your veterans in prayer. And let's keep it designed to show our respect for them and also honor some of your family members who have passed. I do opt into the grave sites and that's the main thing, but this year I'm going to go early so I can be here for the parade. But most importantly, you know, you're going to have your drinkers out there. We know they going to be drinking and they going to be busy. Be safe. Be careful when you drive. And most of all, do not drink and drive. And with that, and did anybody want to get any last minute conversation? And you have something last minute you want to say, Mayor? I see you leaning toward the screen.
I, I just wanted to make mention that the, uh, Garfield Heights neighbors idea hub is having a picnic, I believe on Saturday at the Ironwood, um, billion over at the Garfield Park Reservation. And I think, I don't know, I forgot to mention it in my report. So I appreciate you giving me the time to do so. I believe it's from, uh, one to four, I believe. So, thank you.
Is that posted somewhere, Mayor? Is it posted on our website? Put on the view as well?
I don't know if it's posted on our website, but we can get it posted on our website, but I, I've seen it out there on social media.
If we could, it would be nice to remind.
It was on next door.
It was on next door.
Next door. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Mayor. Uh, with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Vaughn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Do we have a second?
Chuck Donahue, seconds.
All right, we got a second. Can we have a roll call, Bob?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Dudley votes yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Taglerini?
Yes. With that, we have six votes to adjourn to tonight's meeting. And I thank everybody. This was a beautiful night and I appreciate everybody and the cooperation and those for my colleagues and everybody beyond. And I have a happy Memorial Day for each and every one of us in the city. Thank you and God bless.
You did a great job, Mike.
Good job, Mike. Appreciate everybody. And with that, it's good night.
Good night, everybody.